We have a city manager, city council, form of government, and city council sets priorities and policy. Staff does not. But I go through a lot of meetings and I see a lot of boards and commissions and councils. And I think the staff has, in some cases, taken a little too much privilege to suggest policy rather than implementing the policy that comes from boards, commissions, and council. There's a couple of boards and commissions that know a lot. Historical preservation board in this board are pretty informed about the topics that you discuss. And I look in at everything I've heard and seen. I think that that priority setting and policy setting needs to come primarily from this commission, to council, and then to staff, not the other way around. So the reason I mention that is because I think you're being pushed toward talking to South Suburban Parks and Recs about managing parks. What is most urgent and important for environmental stewardship for the city? Well, I'm not sure that's it. And I am going to say that I'm absolutely sure that the building boom that we're in requires you to look at the building code and putting greater insulation and better HVAC in the buildings, the new buildings we're building, especially multifamily. They're very hard to retrofit. They should be built right. We're not going to see building booms like this every 10 years. This is our last chance to get it right for 40, 50 years for these housing units, if not longer. So I'm hoping that you will exert your prerogative to suggest what policy should be for the city for the best outcomes for the decades to come for the most people. Really, this is good service to the people in the city to set the policy, to kind of look at the building codes and make sure those are good. And also land use policies so that we have enough open space, we preserve trees, we have water, we preserve habitat for living creatures other than humans. And so I think you've heard me say variations this before, but I'm looking to you to, you know, I think you have to take a stand here and talk about what the priorities are, the best priorities for you in the city are for environmental stewardship now. So thanks very much.
The only discussion topic tonight we have is an overview of the city's grounds, parks, open space, and four degree indoor operations. I'm privileged to have some staff members here, and I'll have you all please introduce yourselves and then.
I'll start. I'm Mary Dancer. I'm the city forester for Littleton.
And I'm Kelsey Stansfield. I'm the manager of grounds, open space, and natural resources for Littleton.
No, go ahead. You had more?
No. I was just gonna dive right in. Brendan also here.
So I'm Brent Sodderland, director of public works.
I understand you'll have a presentation for us.
Yeah.
Can I? Oh, Jim's here.
Introduce myself and speak for a minute, if I may, as kind of a prelude. I'm Jim Beckleberg, the Littleton city manager. Glad to be here tonight. And I think I wanted to just come to listen to this conversation tonight. I want to, you know, really support our team in, you know, supporting you and thinking about this topic. And as a recap, I know I haven't been here, but I want to just share kind of how we are here and recap kind of what I think the council's request of this board is on this topic. You know, one of the key recommendations in your action plan, the council has adopted, is, you know, taking a role with South Suburban, you know, really pushing the environmental practices agenda, you know, and we think that's important. I think the timing is right for that work because the city is setting up for renegotiating our service agreement with South Suburban Parks and Rec next year. We've had a process under the day, we call it root and renew. And that process has focused largely on facilities and services that, you know, Littleton residents, the Littleton community desires for the future. But we realized, and I think this committee has really helped bring, you know, the environmental lens to the fore, that we haven't, we don't really have environmental practices as part of that root and renew scope. So I think we saw, I know, you know, council members saw the opportunity to ask you, you know, request that you spend some time over the next few months thinking about, you know, documenting, helping us chart kind of that vision for, you know, what those environmental practices, you know, should be when we look at open space and parks. And I'll go a step further, and I think that all of that will be even more powerful for us as you're working with, if you can work with our staff on this, to not only shape South Suburban's kind of practice standards or vision, but really for all of our parks and open space, whether they're owned and managed, you know, or managed by South Suburban or by the city. So, you know, this work will dovetail with the root and renew study, kind of go alongside it when we get to, when the council gets to saying, you know, here's what the Littleton community wants for parks and open space. Then as we engage with South Suburban about service standards, about our expectations, we'll have your work in those standards, you know. Again, working with our staff that has a good handle on this, we'll have all of that as we go forward. So I know that there's a lot of experience in the room, certainly with Scott. And, you know, South Suburban has, you know, is not always the most flexible and willing to, you know, take our requests. But I think as we gear up for a more formal negotiation, I hope that this group will lean into it and, you know, help us really have a strong statement of those practices that we think are important. So this tonight, I think you all know, is intended to really give you the context for how we manage open space, grounds, natural resources, and the direction the city's been going, and what we think is important as we go forward and grow into this space. And then that's going to help hopefully set some context for when you have real discussion, I think in August, August 15th, with South Suburban's director, O'Gannon. Are there questions about that, or if you'd like to jump in?
Any thoughts from the board? Want to hear from staff?
Not directly related, but do we have an update on the sustainability coordinator position yet?
Sure, we're actually setting up interviews for next week.
Oh, cool.
First round of interviews?
First round, yeah.
How many rounds are there?
Well, I'm hoping there's just one round if we have, well, we have five candidates that we're going to be interviewing next week.
Great.
Cool.
Just as a reminder, the, since you all are having that special meeting with Rob on the 15th, your regular meeting that's scheduled for Wednesday 7th is canceled. And then we'll get back to your like regular first Wednesday of the month in September. Okay. You want to say something?
No, you go ahead.
Okay. And so this presentation's fairly brief. I just really wanted to go over some of this stuff before you meet with South Suburban next month. Just a quick overview of Littleton versus South Suburban. I know it's not always clear who maintains what or which, what each entity does. Go over some of our internal strategic goals, some of our big accomplishments that we've had in the last couple of years as they relate to the recommendations that were spelled out in your action plan, some of the challenges we're facing, and then probably the environmental stewardship board can help and support or help guide us moving forward. And then really just open it up for discussion to answer any additional questions that you might have. So first off, what does our division do here at the city of Littleton? We manage all the irrigation, turf, open space, horticulture, and forestry operations within city-owned properties. We also manage two community gardens. We run a number of community programs, and then we do some parks planning and project management, usually in coordination with South Suburban as well. We have only 50 irrigated acres that we maintain, 60 backflows for irrigation, 30 acres of un-irrigated open space. Some of that's like the traditional, like native landscape, and some of it's just like pure random right-of-way sections that they just exist.
Backflow, I don't know that term.
So that is where our irrigation will attach to a water mainline. And so each one of those has a controller that goes with it. And it can vary by site.
Flow preventer?
Yes. Yeah. About 4,500 trees that is growing as we start to take over some sections of the High Line Canal for stormwater management. 60 annual flower pots and various perennial beds throughout the city. And then all of that is done with 10 full-time and three summer seasonal employees. South Suburban does really all the same type of work with the addition of some additional programming, recreation. And they maintain ballfields and playgrounds. And you can see that their acreage is significantly more than ours.
And that's just acreage within Littleton?
That is just within Littleton, correct. And then I hadn't actually seen this until this week, but their staff levels for Littleton are 26 full-time and 18 part-time. If you compare that to the territory that we're managing and staff levels, they've got a pretty lower staffing level for a lot of acreage that they're maintaining within the city of Littleton. And I will disclose that I'm not sure if that is currently staffed or those are positions that they hold. I did not clarify that. So there could be a few more positions that are vacant at this moment. Just to visualize it, green is managed by South Suburban. The tannish color is managed by city of Littleton. One thing that is not on this map are landscape medians. But we do manage some pretty large stretches of landscape medians along Broadway, Mineral, Littleton Boulevard, and Bull's Avenue. They're just not as exciting when you're presenting a parks and open space map because you can't recreate on medians. And, but yeah, they do hold a very big footprint within the city. So the last couple of years, we developed two primary plans that have really guided our operations. So we have, the first one we did was a 2022 grounds and open space best management practices and five-year strategic plan for our division. And that really just focused on defining everything we do, why we do it. It follows industry standards for parks management and laid out a one, three, and five-year goal for our division. And we really did that because when I came on, we didn't really have any guiding documents. I think we were still doing a lot of things right. It just wasn't really written anywhere. And so we really just wanted to spell everything out so that as we have turnover or what have you, there's a central location you can go find our operating practices. Are these available to the public? They are, yes. So both are on our website. Let me double check that. Best management practices. Say, I know that I've seen the forestry management on our website. Okay. Our forestry management plan is for sure. And one of the things called out in that strategic plan was developing that forestry management plan. And so we tackled that and implemented it in 2023. I just pulled out some key goals from both of those plans. Really just wanted to standardize on the grounds and open space side aligned with industry standards, prioritizing protected natural resources and resilient landscapes. Really trying to shift from being less reactionary, which we did through a really robust asset management program.
To what extent do industry standards recognize climate change?
I'm sorry?
To what extent do industry standards recognize climate change? The industry standards, is that aggressive, regressive?
I think that it has been changing in a more progressive way in the last couple of years, for sure.
In other words, I'm asking, what's the wisdom of following industry standards? Is it those two forging our own standards?
I mean, I think a lot of research has been done on the best maintenance practices. You know, anything that we saw that we disagreed with, you know, we put some edits to. But I think that in general, when you're looking at something like turf maintenance, there's not a, there's not a wide range of how you're going to maintain turf. One of, to me, one of the best practices you could do is integrated pest management. And that's both in turf and open space. I would say not everybody's doing that. But that is what I would consider an industry standard for prioritizing natural resources. So you're not just fully relying on chemical management, but you're looking at mechanical, biological, yeah, you're bringing everything into consideration with open space. A good example would be increasing diversity. So you have more competition. So you're not trying, you're not out there spraying leads all the time because you're improving the general health of that landscape.
Can I speak to forestry best management?
Yes, please.
Because it is kind of different. I would say it's incredibly progressive, and a board culture helped with the shift, especially in America. You know, we were very slow, North America was slow to get to that vernacular and forestry spearheaded a lot of that. And I know that this happens too in turf and horticulture. I just, you know, I have trees. So my niche is certainly there, but best management practices were created to create standardized expectations for folks. So this was tons and tons of federal dollars going into very niche research to say, if we cut a branch here versus cutting a branch here, where are we going to get the type of response that's most productive? So that's a really small example of now we know that we cut along the branch bark ridge and the branch collar because there's certain cells that are made for compartmentalizing in trees. That's all done through microscopes. There's no way that I'm ever going to be able to manage a forest while also looking at microscopic tissues of like trying to, you know, trial and error of like, a lot of trees were lost in that processing. And trees take forever to grow. So we're looking at data that started in North America aggressively in the 70s. And then they've extrapolated that to say, here's trees that responded well, here's things that didn't. What are healthy street trees? What trees are tolerant towards ozone? What trees are tolerant towards road salts? You know, like urban forestry specifically has come at the sacrifice of a ton of research hours and a ton of lost trees to see which was the productive way so that we aren't planting aspens in right-of-way. You know, and that's of course oversimplifying it, but I think I can confidently say that it's saving us a ton of money and manpower that we wouldn't ever be able to have person power, excuse me, that we wouldn't be able to have to do it. I feel good at least on forestry B and Bs. And hire those people like crazy.
Yeah, and the National Recreation and Parks Association is consistently updating industry standards for parks management. So, you know, I think that one of the things that we have heard and thrown around is that some park districts can be, quote unquote, like operating in the 70s and 80s. And I think that is implying that they're not operating to current industry standards. What was the organization you said that kind of? National Recreation and Parks Association. So in addition to that, you know, we recognize that the grounds and open space team really didn't have a footing in any sort of community programs or community outreach. We were very much an internal operation. So one of our goals was try to expand that and explore additional community programs and not just be stewards of the environment internally, but to try to help the city as a whole by creating and launching these programs. Forestry management plan, you know, pretty straightforward as far as like the quick overview. Increased canopy, increased diversity. A big one for us was increasing equity throughout the community.
What's that mean in terms of forestry?
Do you want to speak to that?
Sure, I would love to speak to tree equity. Tree equity is just trees are a public asset, and everyone, no matter of status, deserves equal opportunity to them. And historically, due to, like, historically due to redlining, we've seen a really aggressive disproportionate amount of tree, especially in Colorado where you're promoting trees and having to water them and keep up with them when it comes to costs. We see wealth and affluency directly connected to canopy coverage. Littleton is no exception, you know, it's unfortunately very common in North America, and it's a trend in Colorado. And we did an analysis to overlay need of citizens, like high need over canopy coverage, and we fell into the blacking tree equity. I have a map I'll show to you later. It's cool.
So I assume we're doing something to counteract that?
A big, a huge part is our forestry subsidy program. So we launched that. This was the first year doing it.
Skip ahead.
Yeah.
Well, I'll just let you go first. I mean, I, so I just spelled out some of our major accomplishments that we've done over the last couple of years that we laid out in those plans. And so I'll just let Mary run with the forestry side since we're on the topic. But I guess I didn't show you this presentation before, so I was just putting
None of this feels new.
Everything that I thought Mary was doing really well on, I threw in there. But one of the first things we did was a citywide inventory and risk assessment throughout the city. And part of that was looking at canopy coverage through each neighborhood and comparing that with census difference from the data.
If anyone's had comments on those Main Street trees?
I did not put them in. That was part of the risk reduction piece.
Of those trees was a high point or low point?
Hard to flip. Mary's done my accomplishment slide. Everyone hated me. It was such a terrible introduction.
Well, I was just gonna say too, there are study sessions that you all have had with council, right? So if you're interested, you can watch some of those where they have like very much a detailed conversation about those two. Yeah, one of, I mean, one of the first things that we really had to do was just get ourselves to a baseline. And we didn't have a forestry program here prior to Mary's arrival. And so the last two years have been really heavy on clearance, pruning, and hazard removals throughout the city just so we could reduce overall risk to our citizens. Because a lot of these trees are in the right-of-way, like Main Street medians. And so it's not the most glamorous part because we, I think last year, we ended up removing 140 trees throughout the city. Based on the health of the trees.
They were considered dead.
100% dead.
We started with only considered dead, and then this year we'll be doing a small portion of proactive ash removals that are unhealthy ash that aren't good candidates for treatment, focusing in right-of-ways again, and then dying or diseased. So we're starting very like aggressive words for removals. Definitely not doing anything, though. Anything we can treat to save, we're treating to save. Yeah, I could talk more about this. The, so yes, inventory and risk assessment, of course, you can't manage what you don't know. So that was the enlightening, I guess, first step of seeing what we had. Maintaining so many median trees, we did see a kind of shocking number of inappropriate trees planted in medians. So conifers are really susceptible to like air pollution and salt and 100 other different types of fungal diseases. So like mineral, right now, we're seeing a fungal disease spread that's pine wilt, and that happens when the trees get stressed and then it spreads. So lack of diversity along median plantings, but also the idea of planting conifers in medians is something that we would not ever do moving forward. So that was helpful in seeing some of that stuff. And then kind of trying to come up with the plan of what are we going to plant in medians? Where can we appropriately plant in locations that we can be stewards of it in the future rather than sitting somewhere and stepping away and hoping that the tree is going to be fine in 40 years? And then moving into EAB, we started quickly with Emerald Ash Bor. Emerald Ash Bor, I caught it. I caught it because I remember. I only come to like two of these a year. The acronyms. Started with the Emerald Ash Bor program of knowing that it was likely going to be coming. But when I started here, it was in Arvada. It was the closest or farthest stuff. Went through the Emerald Ash Bor program, advocated, presented. The week that we found Emerald Ash Bor, presenting, expecting to find it in five years, but actually found it.
Is that a disease, a good tree disease?
It's a little pest that only attacks trees.
Like you just really like them?
Spread awareness. They're beautiful. So they are, it's an invasive pest that only attacks ash trees. They have 100% efficacy in killing the trees. Treatment is very proactive. Treatment is very productive. So it's not something that is, you know, going to be like a no-treatment alternative. It's just treatment as a clue. So we presented the plan, then found Emerald Ash Bor. So quickly kicked that into gear of implementing it a little faster than the initial plan was for that. And then that was a huge part of the forestry subsidy program was not only do we need to encourage growth of our canopy, which is one of our biggest goals, but that comes with the preservation of the existing canopy. So planting trees is really good and important. But if we can't maintain our existing infrastructure of canopy, then it's a little bit futile in that trees grow so slowly. So we've pushed a ton of community outreach and done a lot of different efforts and put a lot of money into supporting the treatment of ash trees and private property, especially in our already higher canopy neighborhoods. So where there isn't a tree inequity, but we're wanting to make sure that we don't then only focus on planting new trees while ignoring the canopy that is already lost. So the subsidy program has kind of been, this year has focused a lot on trying to plant new trees in low canopy neighborhoods, protecting trees in our denser canopy neighborhoods. Subject to change certainly as funding allows. And then.
I will highlight that the subsidy program was launched in February. And we had, we funded 60 applicants, about 60.
A little over now, but yes, yeah.
And ran out of funding, which is, which is much quicker than we thought. And now have an additional 60 some on the waitlist, so.
We start, yeah, we had to start turning folks away. We get like 65. And now we're only funding tree plantings for the last little section of money that we have, but tried to divide it up. It was, it was.
A lot more successful than anticipated, but it took off really quick, and we've heard a lot of support. That program will continue to get funded through a lot of city and code, development code that Mary's been working on with our community development team. Development code, um, that Mary's been working on with our community development team, um, so as we collect. Um, different fees and fines for tree removals to the development process, um, where those used to be just absorbed into the general fund, those now. Get directed into um this account to help continue funding the subsidy program.
And so is this program, when people, you're talking to these applicants, are they, is it like trees for their residents, basically?
Private property, only, yeah, um, you have to be a resident of the city of Littleton, and you have to. Hire a contractor that is a licensed arborist for Littleton, and this year those were the only two requirements. So they apply, it comes through me, forestry staff goes out and does a site visit, um, we make sure that the licensed arborist is. Licensed and doing um. Ethical work, and then we approve it, and then once they finish the work, they complete it, send us a paid invoice, and then we reimburse them the. Portion of it, so it caps out at five hundred dollars, but we were doing it. When we saw how quickly it was taking, it like took a whole lot faster than I anticipated, so we started doing it proportionally based on um neighborhood need. So higher need, higher percent.
The cost to plant a tree?
The cost of planting a tree is crazy variable, so it depends, like a two-inch bollinger burlap, which is what's really. Consistent in construction work can cost five hundred dollars just to buy the tree, and then if you're bringing in a company to plant it. Then it's whatever the, some companies require you to do watering for a year because of warranties, you know, whatever it might be. Um, our contractor dollars for it, we do containers, number fifteen size containers, so. Like this big round, this tall, um, which would be about an inch caliber, and. We do get a discount being, I mean, a scar could be large, but ours cost. About three hundred dollars to like buy the tree and about two hundred to install the tree. So five hundred is, could cover it, but it would be nice for it to be higher. Our max is at five hundred because it becomes a tax issue of, um, they have to write off taxes if we, if the city gives. A homeowner more than five hundred dollars.
Remember remembering, you made some comments at one point about uh food, forest work, and is that. Something that's come far enough to be on the list of accomplishments?
I would not say it's been on the list of accomplishments, I think.
Are there obstacles to that?
For us, there's a ton of obstacles to where we can plant um fruiting trees, so we've pressed into the. Kind of like vamping up the orchard, the already existing orchard at the museum, and I think. If I'm remembering right, that was an idea you had for the Ketchikan Gallup. Master Plan Space, loved to forest that area, that's how it's urban Ketchikan Park.
A lot of support for increased canopy, a lot of support for.
What, how large was the sample size that we're saying?
We had over a thousand responses, I don't have it pulled up and ready to go, though.
Did people have concerns about it, or are they just?
There's a lot of logistical maintenance involved, so from a staff perspective, that would be my only concern of. We're already functioning at pretty full capacity and still have. My list of catching up to get to a spot where I feel like, hey, we're self-sustaining and we're acting proactively, it's really lengthy. Right, um, ornamental will do some level of structure pruning, ideally, haven't gotten to that part, we're still dealing with like pretty aggressive hazard pruning. But ornamentals you can kind of set and leave and then do structure pruning to like clear out our deadwood. For fruit production, which I'm sure you're aware with enough that the more you cut, the more fruit it produces. Um, lot of disease susceptibility, the, a lot of them are in the same genus and pests and disease tend to spread in genuses. So malice, for example, if one apple gets diseased, then it'll spread to the others. And it just needs, I mean, it can easily be managed, it just needs like a full-time. Like if you're looking at orchards, there's full-time staff for really small portions of it. So I think it's, it's more involved, um, also the focus, I guess, generally being urban forestry and. You know, what are our biggest goals, and if that is canopy coverage and safety for the public. Then it turns into food production being a pretty separate sect of urban forestry, so from my expertise, it's limited. She honestly knows more about, probably more about fruit producing trees than me.
If uh if the resources can be found and applied, is it for food, forestry projects?
I have only managed fruit tree production within community gardens. Um, and that alone was extremely labor intensive, and that was. In New York where fruit trees. Grow a little easier than in Colorado, and I mean, we had a full-time staff to maintain. A very small amount of trees, I just, operationally, I think you would have to have. A standalone team, because there's a lot of expertise that goes into fruit tree maintenance, we spent an entire year just trying to. Reverse some of the disease that had hit, um. And then when you look at just normal turnover in the operational program, you're constantly looking for someone who has that background. Because it, I mean, it takes years and years just to. Get to a point where they're even producing a decent amount, and then if you're not. Maintaining them very diligently, they decline fast, so.
We have been, not that this is what you want, or trying to make a fake positive answer, but. We have been throwing in fruit trees at like water projects, so like, because I'm kind of like, all I can do is help, like. If it like looks like garbage, no one's going to care, and if it produces fruit, then that's great, but it's kind of like. It's a, it's a fruit-bearing tree, it's good for pollinators regardless of if it's producing like a high yield.
We've tried them in.
Done some of that in.
Highland Canal, um, Jackass Gulch, I believe, is getting some.
Um, the mineral only knows the superhighway, I don't know what it's actually called.
That's Jackass Gulch.
That one is, okay, um, Jameson. Right now, it's pretty bust around the sinkholes right now, because that's the money of three plants, so. So we are like putting stuff out there, just not like, we're creating this stand that requires this much management. Um, so if we could have passive fruit trees, I'm super on board with that.
We've had conversations. We've had conversations with Sassa Urban about um planting some within open spaces where we don't have a lot of. Uh, foot traffic, um, one of the complaints that you you will get is the fruit will fall and it'll rot and it brings. Wasps and um rodents, and um, so it can be a turnoff for a lot of people and. Um, they've been really open to experimenting with that, we talked about it a lot with the Ketchikan Gallup. Master Plan, because there is a huge passive area that um doesn't really have social trails going through it or. Any sort of like soft surface trail, and so there's definitely flexibility to play around with that, but. Um, then you're having to identify water needs, uh, because those areas are traditionally irrigated, and so. Um, fruit trees need a ton of water, uh, in Colorado to produce fruit, and so. It's not something that's been mapped out significantly, it's more been just like a. Oh, let's try one here, see how it does, let's try one over here, and.
Which is of course in our inventory, just not in a formal production state.
Is there a way?
None of them have produced fruit, but they're still.
That's also the problem.
Is there a way that species selection can can mitigate some of these, and I'm thinking, these aren't really trees. Yeah, these are more shrubs, but like, uh, you know, plums and currants and and uh shell cherries and so on.
That's what you see a lot of along the Highland Canal, um.
And those are.
Volunteer, I mean, no one planted those, um, yeah. Actually, we did a tour of the canal through all of Littleton earlier this week, and. Um, a lot of stuff is fruiting right now, but um. How many people want to go eat? Cherries and.
We make them out into jelly every year, yeah, for most years.
It's not like what you're buying at, if you buy cherries at the grocery store, that you, they're not.
Lot of sugar. Yeah, 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 that's it, that's the trick.
And a lot of crab apples, but we did. Also not super tasty, um.
Unless you have the sugar and make. Pile of juice.
We did add something into our code um to prevent fruit-bearing trees within the right of way, just because. The amount crab apples really caused it, we, we, you're probably familiar with the crab apple route in Littleton, um. It's all planted along major roadways and the fruit just piles and rots in the street. So it's quite a, quite a best for our streets team.
Equipment-wise, it's difficult to go through.
Thanks for the conversation.
I'm, I'm very for it, I just don't think that we have the capacity realistically, at least not right now.
I think it's really fun in theory, it's just the, the maintenance. If you don't have the capacity to maintain it and you don't have the expertise, it, it goes bad really quickly. Well, and you likely, like, especially in planting those, like, you want to be able to look. Forward, right, to make sure like you're getting enough funding for those to be able to maintain them for long term, right, whereas like. An ornamental, it's a lot easier to where if funding shifts and your team has to shrink, those are going to be able to sort of. Sustain in some. Whereas like, you know, if you get funding or without planting a fruit tree, you've. Done it.
Or like committed correctly once, you know, like.
Not clean your poppers between every single cut, um, it's just tedious a lot.
Um, yeah, we've, we've increased our staffing, so now forestry is, has three specific forestry folks.
I really liked putting tripled it.
I know, yeah. Yeah, that's fun power, you should use that. We have done the habitat trees, sorry, I started at the bottom, that's weird, um, the habitat trees. Which has actually caught off, like, a lot of people have been really excited, and now our documentation from. Habitat Tree Standards, which is trying to preserve, like retain. Safe sections of dead wood instead of doing a ground removal, um, keeping some of that rotting area that the secondary cavity nesters use. Um, preserving some of it in areas, of course, that is safe to the public, being the top priority, but that's. Um, secondary cavity nesters. That's my, that's my food forest bit where I could talk for eight hours about habitat trees.
Mary's like leading the charge in the state of Colorado. She has like a whole.
Website, West Michigan website has our document.
She partnered with um a.
An ornithologist.
Okay, major at.
Our intern.
We, we did hire an intern, um. Um, who had all this knowledge of different bird species and how they habitat and. Worked with Mary to develop this whole guideline of how to, um, instead. Turn a dead tree into something really beneficial for the community, and it's just, so it's taken off.
Secondary cavity is a not rotted out or something, for example?
So, like, big, big overview, primary cavity nesters are birds like woodpeckers, so they create holes. The majority of our birds are all secondary cavity nesters, so they only come into pre-existing holes, yeah. Um, which means that they're gonna go into, like, rot, well, naturally, like, naturally, if a tree's decomposing in the woods. It's habitat for like four different life phases and varieties of birds. But for Colorado, all of our migratory, seasonal migratory birds are, tend to fall into secondary cavity nesters. And they eat a type of insect, saprisilic insects that eat out dead wood. So those insects only come if there's rotten wood, which is normally a huge red flag for urban trees. But we've been able to use spots in, you know, kind of our native areas, Highland Canal, Angeline Little Greenway. Or at the museum, Ketchikan, um, and it's, it's just kind of a way to be like. Passively let nature do what it's supposed to do, as long as we can ensure that there isn't um public risk associated. It's so, that one is, yeah, I'll tap out because I know my limits.
One thing I do want to highlight that's maybe not as exciting in presentation, but is, is really gonna help us with our canopy goals is. We've been working both with the city attorney's office and community development. To really, really strengthen our code around protecting existing canopy. Um, so in the past, you, you could go down and you could cut down. A fifty-year-old, just beautiful, healthy tree, and there'd be no consequence at all, um, they would have you plant just one tree in. In, in its replacement, um, when the U L U C was developed, um, they strengthened that code quite a bit, um. To be, um, there's a whole series of re- replacement versus in lieu of fees. Um, it's good, but um, it's not, it doesn't compare to what it's becoming the standard with other municipalities, and so we. Um, contracted with Davy Resource Group um to review our code and um a lot of comparable cities' codes. Um, to provide some recommendations, and so we are implementing a two hundred and fifty dollar um per inch fee. Um, for healthy tree removal, um.
That's inches of like the diameter.
And it's currently.
Somebody's removing that tree. Subsidy program's gonna do really well. That's how it's fun, so what, what I'm thinking of that is you go from a contractor saying, we have to remove this tree to suddenly like. Oh, that's a twenty thousand dollar tree, you know, we can move the sidewalk and protect the tree.
And this is in reference to like when someone's developing land.
Correct.
Not necessarily, like, if I have a tree in my house and I want to cut it down and it's perfectly healthy, would I get that fine as well, or this is only for like new development?
We are not currently enforcing anything on private property, um.
Unless it's a right of way.
Unless it's, there's a threat to the right of way generally, and that is when, um. In order, this is not what we're doing, is enforcing them to remove whatever that hazard is, um, so. I'd be curious like uh what our legal team thinks about like what the options are, because can you? Right, can you?
Most, most municipalities do.
They do.
But it's like residential.
If, it's usually with something that's like fifteen inches diameter at breast height is the standard, so that's fifteen inches. Probably like this big round tree, so it's something.
That or bigger.
Municipality has to come in, yeah, and it's, it varies a ton on location, like. If you get into Canada, if you have any vegetation, they have people coming up, you know, so it's like, all of that can be variable, and we started without doing any of that. Because we're having to fight with developers right now on being like, trees are worth money, so, you know. I don't think that that wouldn't be something down the road, but that comes with full forestry code enforcement staffing. So that's someone's full-time job to go out on private properties, and right now, our rule has been, no, we just hardlined. We don't go into private properties to kind of delineate it while we're trying to get our code up to date, and there's a lot to do to get our code.
And this is all like when you say code, the U L U C?
Both, code and charter and U L U C.
A lot of the private property pieces are more within the city code, whereas development code is really focusing on those new developments. Um, we did already implement our recommendations internally, so if we have a city. Run project, um, this is coming a lo- a lot with, with the sinkholes, it is, um, they're actually, um. Those departments are planning funding transfers um to help re-vegetate. First within the area as much as we can, but then any rollover would go to that subsidy program. Really want to try to retain the canopy in that area, it's not always possible, um, especially if you have. Some of these waterways where you, it's not irrigated around, we know we can't plant. Necessarily inside the waterway, but we can get up towards the edge, um. We have, you know, we have to work with what is available, otherwise we have three years of hand watering those trees, so. Yeah, so, oh yeah, minimum, but. So, um, I, I'll switch back over, um, to the grounds and open space side. Um, one of the big things we did was introduce that integrated pest management system, uh, the division kind of flip-flopped. Over the years between being chemical-free and chemical-heavy and then back again, and what ended up happening is a lot of our right of ways just ended up with. Really heavy seed banks for noxious weeds, and so we had um. A year where we were really super aggressive with our maintenance, and now our, like, our. Control through chemical application, and now we're scaling that back, um, to focus more on that integrated pest management. Um, because when the seed bank is just that heavy, you just. You're finding a losing battle, um. We, we partnered with scraps to offer composting at our community garden. Um, we, we partnered with scraps to offer composting at our community gardens. Um, before that, they were just going into the trash.
Scraps?
Scraps is a composting company. Um, I actually learned about them. They partner with, uh, Dirt Coffee. And they provide a community compost drop off site. Um, so anyone can go and drop off compost at Dirt and, um, they'll come and pick it up. And, um, so we have worked with them over the last, so this will be our third year, um, providing that to our community gardeners, which are about two hundred members. Um, we also partnered this year with Resource Central to offer, uh, turf conversions in garden in a box to homeowners at a discounted rate. Um, yeah, so that launched, we actually were, it was about a month ago and I think we only have ten garden boxes left. So if you want one, get on there.
It's a lot in the spring, missed it.
Scott, scraps is actually, their full company name is Scraps Mile High.
Um, we've done a number of landscape conversions and trial gardens. Um, most noteworthy would be our Littleton Boulevard medians by the courthouse. And so, um, we partnered with, um, Ever Botanic Gardens runs a program for municipalities to do landscape design. They used to have a staff member. She recently left, but she was like the expert on all median plants. Um, so, um, everything we have in our medians, um, in those ones that we converted are either, um, low water, native or pollinator promoter, um, very salt tolerant. So we don't see that, that decline from the roadways. Um, and a few of them only need watered in the first year, um, and then just supplemental water when we have extreme. Like this past June where it was like a hundred degrees every other day. Um.
So is there an ongoing, like, uh, you know, there's a lot of medians that are still turf. Is that kind of an ongoing transition?
Yeah, so we've been trying to tackle the smaller ones in-house where our staff can actually go and get the plants and do all the install. Um, when you start looking at something like the mineral medians, that's just realistically not something we can do in-house. Um, and so those, I say mineral because we're actually gonna be moving into design in twenty five for, um, starting at East Mineral. Um, we're doing that, we're targeting our absolute worst irrigation systems that just are no longer functioning. And so we're seeing a serious decline of, um, trees and vegetation, if you even want to call it, but it's turf, but it's it's barely turf. Um.
I drive along Federal a lot, like Federal close to Bowls. Uh, and I think I even put in a C Click Fix recently because one of those sprinklers was just like shooting directly in the street. But I was like, that'd be so great if like this median could transition away from turf.
Yeah, so, um, one third of our water use, um, at least in twenty twenty was going towards medians. Um, so just unusable space out in public.
And she's the third.
It's actually not that much. Our water use is not significantly high. Um, we, I'll pull it up, um, in a second. I have it, but. You guys have to watch me funnel through Excel sheets. So I'll clear this out in, in just a moment and look for it. Um, so this year we started installing, um, in evapotranspiration control, central control system for our irrigation. So, um, historically, we found out something was broken by driving by and seeing that uh, your water was gushing or the area was completely dry. Um, because we didn't have any monitoring system. We met with several central control companies. Um, for those unfamiliar, central control system is, um, a remote mon- uh, monitoring system. So you can like, I could be at home in Lakewood and be on my phone and I could be turning on irrigation and it'll notify me if it shuts off because something will break. Um, the evapotranspiration system, traditional irrigation systems will just water on a schedule. Um, our systems look at, um, evaporation from the day above, from the day before and, um, soil moisture levels and it adjusts based on those factors. So, um, you know, usually you would just have like a rain hold in the water and it would shut off if it's raining. It would run at your, you know, your twenty minute, however long you have it set, um, every other night, whatever your program is. Sometimes our system will water for ten minutes over here and nothing over here. And, you know, forty minutes in this zone because it got baked in the sun all day.
Did y'all see a water savings once that was implemented?
So we just finished installing our first round last month. Um, and so we are still working out the kinks. Because what we're finding is this new system and compatibility with our thirty year old systems. There are more kinks to work out than anticipated. So we've found some things don't really talk to each other. And so we're still working through those. Um, because we don't have, um, the only records we have are, um, Denver water bills. Um, and so, yeah, once we get through the season, we'll be comparing, um, those old Denver water bills to, um, this watering season. But, um, probably won't rely too much on this year since it's been the first install and there's trial and error. It's probably not the best picture of its functionality. But, um, already just, um, part of that is installing master valves on all the backflows. So anytime there's a leak, the system just shuts off. The ones where we don't have these systems, it will just run until somebody goes and shuts it off. And with sixty different backflows throughout the city, um, a lot of driving around. Monitor those, so. Um.
To pay someone to maintain all the probes, like moisture probes and all this stuff.
Those are all managed through the company. Yeah, so we do, we pay, um, an administrative fee to continue to use that system, um, through the year. But yeah, all of the weather monitoring is provided through the company. And, um, you know, we met with five of the really well-known companies in the region. And we brought in, um, a, a ton of different people. We had irrigation consultants helping us review. We had all of our irrigation staff, our management team. And we forced ranked everything, um, with a lot of different variables in this one. Up to the top. So it's, it's weather track if you're interested in learning more into it. I know irrigation's not super exciting for everybody, but.
Horatio. Horatio. Discouraging recurring theme at my time in local government in Littleton that we're just now modernizing a lot of things that we needed to be modernized, you know, this well, for a while, people just had to drive around and see. Like when I started, um, council, Keith Reister, who's the former public works director came in. And so we had to spend like all this money scoping sewers because we didn't know how much sewer we had. And we found like a mile of extra sewer. I don't know that there's any, any sort of action item, uh, here, but it, it just, it sucks. It sucks. Being behind the eight ball like this.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, one of our major challenges, um, which is in a later slide, but I'm bouncing around is, um, dealing with aging infrastructure and the cost of it. Um, and the competition between that and trying to implement these new programs. Because I think everything that we're introducing is really important. Um, but we can't ignore the aging infrastructure. And then, you know, there's many competing needs within the city. Um, our irrigation replacements obviously not gonna take a priority over a collapsed sewer line with the hole in the street. Like, we're obviously gonna prioritize that. Um, and it's not unique to Littleton. I mean, you have a lot of municipalities you're dealing with, just such a huge backlog of deferred maintenance. And so, um, balancing the moving forward, but not letting anything go too bad is difficult. Um. Um, otherwise, um, yeah, I, I mentioned our S inventory program. That's a citywide initiative. Um, all of our operations divisions have been inventorying everything in our systems over the past couple of years. And so we can actually, um, look at how much time and resources we're spending managing, um, all of our maintained areas or equipment or what have you. And then, um, we've just been funding some great park development projects in partnership with South Suburban that really focus on natural resources, um, nature play, um, connecting the communities with the natural environment. One of the biggest ones is Reynolds Landing Park. Um, if you're not familiar with it, it's a park space near Breckenridge Brewery. Um, really started as a need to rehab the section of the South Pot River through there. That was just, um, severely degrading and, um, really expanded to be, um, a nature play facility. And through South Suburban's master plan, we heard people just really wanted to connect, connect with nature, connect with the water. Um, in a way that wasn't like water sports, because you see a lot of like whitewatering parks in Colorado. But, um, you know, we focused on a design that was, um, inviting to everybody. And so it's ADA accessible up to the water. Um, it's designed in a way to have little pools for kids to play in. Um, and then the whole upper landscape has a series of grid exploratory nature zones for, for kids. And so that construction is kicking off this September. Um, big project for us. But nonetheless, I think a huge step forward, especially after COVID. We really learned the community wanted more open space. They wanted, um, more trees. They wanted just better acts like to escape the urban environment and feel connected to nature. And, um, you know, I think South Suburban is also really starting to recognize that. And our past couple of park planning projects over the last couple of years have been super collaborative. And, um, we're starting to plug in some of those natural play elements in all of our upcoming park developments, so.
Will it have a standing wave?
It won't. It'll have a tubing loop, so.
Basically just like the river will be diverted for like a little.
Yeah, so it'll kind of like divert into two. So there'll be the, um, we're pulling the Mary Carter Greenway Trail actually away from the river. Um, because it is a really heavily, um, um, commuter trail. And so we're having a lot of user conflicts. Um, it'll actually kind of bridge up and over the entrance to the park. So when you go in the park and you turn around, um, because we don't know what might go in that, um, vacant lot, um, that's right there. But ideally, like you won't be able to see the urban environment, um, once you're in there. And then, um, it's really pedestrian focused once you're in there. But yeah, the river will, um, have one tubing route and then this small trickle channel that'll separate next to the bank. And that all, that, that's all part of the first phase, which should be about two years in development, so.
Kelsey and I did a little video explaining the.
Oh gosh, don't watch it.
Is it, is it one of the like around the town with Jim? Heard of it. Yeah, I haven't seen that video recently, but I've seen it around the town. Oh yeah, around town with Jim.
Around town with Jim Ray.
I threw up after the one I had to do. My body shuts down in front of the camera. Uh, no, it was the second one we had to do for State of the City, which took forty-five minutes and they kept telling me I was doing great. Just stopped lying. It's supposed to be a two minute recording. We should, I should be gone by now. Please never ask me to do this.
That season drops.
Record all videos over the next three months when I'm out. Um, so yeah, so, you know, going back to those major challenges, I really, I, we don't, I don't think we have that many challenges. We've had amazing support from upper leadership. Um, anything that we've pushed forward has been, um, approved and funded. And, um, you know, we've been able to trial and error some different things. Um, but by far and large, our biggest challenge is we just have limited land ownership, um, or areas that we manage. And so especially when we're looking at like our forestry goals, we, we can only plant so many trees on those in property. And so we really need the support from our partners, um, you know, expansion of those community programs to hit private property. Um, you know, in, in most cities, when you would, you know, the parks department would be part of that city. They focus all their planting efforts within the parks. Um, being that we don't operate the parks program, we have to collaborate with South Suburban to have them accelerate those goals for us. And I think our, our biggest goals in relation to environmental stewardship is, is really in the forestry realm. Um, you know, I think we're doing amazing stuff with our parks and open space that we manage. But again, it's just such a small footprint that it's not necessarily gonna have the impact. Um, but putting priority in open space management and forestry management, whether it's, um, us or someone like South Suburban is really fruitful. And, um, you know, one thing we're seeing is, um, you know, they do a lot of things really great, but I don't know that their forestry and their open space operations have necessarily caught up. Um, there are two programs that we tend to see are pretty under-resourced. Um, and so like, as we start to move into those operating agreement negotiations, um, one thing will be bringing to the table is, is these are really core values for us as a city. Um, and we'd like to, you know, however that's enforced, encourage them to, um, ramp up those programs a little bit more to meet our community needs.
Can you talk more about that specifically was what it means like?
So they have twenty thousand trees in Littleton. They have two hundred thousand that they maintain district wide. And they have, uh, six forestry staff.
Currently three.
Currently three. Uh, they're supposed to have six.
Hundred dozen trees.
Correct.
We have thirty-four thousand trees and I cannot keep up.
What's your sense of why? And look, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but I think, um, it's important for this board to know about the sort of lived reality, especially your department's relationship with South Suburban. Um, because just to sort of harken back to Jim's sort of introductory comments, it is an open question how shapeable, uh, our relationship with South Suburban is. And that is a stunning statistic and it doesn't surprise me at all. So what, what's your thoughts?
Well, so I'm sure you've seen our operating agreement. It's like two and a half pages. It doesn't have a lot.
I've never seen something on a typewriter.
I, that's the one.
It was the seventies or from?
It's been.
Uh, sixteen, eighteen, there was a revision in like the seventies.
Is that something that can be shared with the, the board?
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. Especially with negotiations coming up, I, I'd love to see like what our baseline is.
Quick, quick read. Like just, I can't even logistically apply anymore.
Okay.
Um, we've worked through that.
Is it fair to say, in light of that comment, Kelsey, that our existing operation agreement with South Suburban is just ad hoc? Like it's just, it's just being sort of made up as we go.
It, when it comes to parks planning, um, you know, I would say every, every plan we've had over the last three years, we've had to have a conversation about how we're going to proceed. Um, it's been a, a pretty easy thing to manage just because we've had people at the table that are willing to collaborate. So like, I think the way it's written is actually like their board and our council have to be in a joint meeting for every park approval, um, in the planning process.
Which is not feasible.
Yes, it's just does, it's, we can't do that. Um, so instead they present to their board, we present to our council, um, they're adopted separately and then back together. So that's a really good example of like. Logistically not really feasible anymore, so.
What are your top line priorities for, uh, for potential operation?
Um.
People on the district's forestry staff.
Operation at least, yeah. I think they, I think they're, well, not, they're not operating at full capacity.
Did you have a hard time like retaining staff or is it like?
So he, so we just met to review some, um, a wish list for the operating agreement. I'm trying to pull it up right now.
I'm also curious, what kind, like going into these negotiations, what kind of leverage maybe is my word we have?
I would say from the tree side, we're trying to just be like, increase canopy as our biggest goal and then under that comes with.
I can speak to the, some of the larger dynamics and I'm, I'm sure Scott can too, but. No, you know, I think this is where philosophies may, you know, there are, there are different ways to approach this. But, um, Littleton residents.
But um Littleton residents and properties, the boundaries are part of the. South Suburban district, South Suburban Parks and Rec district. Um, but it's a separate governmental entity from the city, separate from the, you know. So, you know, they are not, uh, you know, all Littleton residents. Are members of the district and elect um their, their board. Um, but the city council is not necessarily, there is, there, there's not a lot of leverage. Inherently in that relationship between those two boards because they are a separate entity. Uh, so it really is through a lot of relationship building, um, that I think change. Happens and, and will happen. I, I think uh Kelsey and Hertie and Mary have done some really good work the last. Couple of years with Keith to um start to build that and plan parks, park work differently. Um, I think, you know, there's a lot of, of work going on right now that where um. You know, they're being clear, I think, I don't know, I'm sure I'm not the only one, but the cities have been kind of pushing for more transparency in there. Their budgeting and capital planning, just so that we have the information and we can, we can talk to them about that. We, we now have. A lot of that and we're gonna have a joint council meeting, board meeting in a month here. Um, that, you know, we're going to be talking about how their funding is allocated and what they're doing, what their major projects are. So, you know, I, I think um we've been trying to build the, uh, build the relationship so that we can, you know. Have Littleton's interests um incorporated into their, their plans. Um, one thing I know nature plays in example where Littleton was, was really, I think, a leader in. Advocating and pushing for incorporation of more of that um into their, their parks. That what, what I had heard is that for a long time, they just wouldn't do it. Um, it was a different type of maintenance, they had a very standard type of um. Infrastructure for their, for their facilities, they would do parks and parks were this and it was turf. And so they have even, you know, I've, I've heard them talk about how they're now incorporating nature play.
They actually, they created a whole new designation of parks within the district, which are. I might get the name wrong, but essentially teenager parks. Um, and so whereas they, they used to be against putting any sort of wood element in parks, um, that's a, that's a defining feature now. Of these nature parks. Um, and so that one of the last projects that they had presented to me that I, I wasn't as involved in in the design. They were proposing to us putting nature play in the park and I was, okay, this is a good, great, okay.
Kelsey, you might, if I'm, I'm a Scott, just if you could just speak another uh example that's been interesting, I think is the work that you did with them. Around Catchering Gallop and you, you shared with me some of the conversation about native. Plants and grasses on certain sides of the park and how it feels like, like they're, they're opening uh more to that. Um, what, how have those conversations been? Because I think that's going to be more and more of a priority for us is to. To, you know, replace uh bluegrass where it's appropriate.
Yeah, so um, you know, our, our Petron Gallop plan, if, there's a lot of focus on new development. Um, and redesign within the park, but there's also a major component of trying to improve the health and diversity of the existing open spaces out there. And we went into those conversations, um, initially, every August, that open space field gets mowed down. Uh, to park cars on it for the craft fair. And um I thought it was South Suburban that was doing that and then found out it was actually the city that was. Encouraging practice, um, and that they had actually wanted to stop that a long time ago. To start improving the health and diversity of the open space that surrounds the park. Um, and so as we're working through this, this master plan, there's a number of items that are more operational. Um, that we can really implement right away. One is um increasing tree canopy. Um, within the, the turf field that it currently exists because it is irrigated, um, so we have a high success. Of um retaining those trees and we actually, we proposed to them because we know that their forestry staff is. Um, hurting a little bit at the moment, um, of actually funding and planting the new trees in that park. Um, and providing contract services to water them, um, which gives them. Three to five years to expand that maintenance program before they have to start taking over those trees. Um, that's something that we can fund through our open space sharebacks, um, and something that they were really in support of. As well, um, but then really concentrating on. Doing an overhaul to the, the open space on the east side of Catchering Lake. Um, right now, you know, keeping native vegetation low like that and increases the geese that are out there, which nobody likes. Um, uh, it can cause problems with the waterways that are out there. Um, and so all around it is a win that I've figured out that we were actually the, the problem. Um, and mowing it down every August, um, that's something that we can work to correct now. Um, but I um, you know, I can review some of, some of the key items. I'm not going to share because it's not pretty. Um, it's just in my like jumbled notes at the moment. Um, but, and I will say, I don't know if some of these can go into an operating agreement because I don't know the legality of some of what goes in, but. Um, I think at the core, um, because we are limited in our, in our space, I think that we've created some really positive. Long-term goals for the city is really finding a way for them to help carry those forward. Um, so investing in those open space and forestry programs more, um, so we actually can start planting more and maintaining what we have. Um, and putting the effort into um just in, improving the open space because we do have a lot of open space in the. Um, in Littleton, but I don't think it was widely recognized as a priority for the community until recent years. Um, and so it takes a while to catch up to that.
Sir, can I just ask, uh, Mary, Kelsey, Brad, just Jim as well? So this board in our action plan, um, sort of recognizing imperfect and. Relationship with South Suburban, put as one of our um top priorities. Um, asking council to sort of make us uh an accountability board in our relationship with South Suburban. Um, which everyone's attention, so mission accomplished. Um, but uh the um. What I hear you saying, and I don't mean to be pessimistic, I don't mean to be closed minded, I just want to, I just want to know what the options are so we can know. Uh, how to do what's best for the city and for its stewardship and sustainability goals. Jim, when I hear you talk about it, it sounds like um. We're sort of waging this perennial persuasion campaign with South Suburban. So much of us achieving our goals insofar as their management of our open space and, and natural resources is concerned. Just depends on their goodwill and how variable is that? Um, a, a, and, and Kelsey seems to be echoing that, you know, we had to sit down and sort of convince them that, you know, we, we are going to have wood elements, natural. So we are gonna, we are gonna prioritize um native plants. And to me, it sounds like the tail wag of the dog, right? They are a professional manager of natural resources and it's twenty-four and I'm surprised. That they're not coming to us enthusiastically saying, we need to be prioritizing native plants and we need to be prioritizing. Um, you know, equity in the, in the urban forest, uh, and we need to be prioritizing, um. You know, natural play structures and so on. And that's, that's basically where my concern has always been. That um they're not so easily persuadable because there is a values conflict. That, that uh, they're not necessarily spontaneous about doing stewardship and sustainability. And um, that's not great, that's not great. And so I don't know, what do you all think? I mean, do you want to keep just waging that persuasion campaign? I mean, what, what do we do? Um, what can we put into an operations agreement? What can we bring to these relationships? Do we bring to these relationships? Those are questions I'm. Sort of constantly wondering and I promise I'm not trying to be antagonistic of South Suburban, I'm just trying to work with the problem.
Um, well, I feel confident that our wish list, um, that we've come up with will go to South Suburban as part of that negotiation. Um, now I've read through a couple of other operating agreements to see what. Realistically goes into them versus what doesn't. Um, I think a lot of it is based on park planning and development. Um, there's some to do with, you know, um, levels of service and um defining. Really that the operational side, um, that's a key component that is missing from our current operating agreement and one that I would expect to see in a new one. Um, I know one thing that we've asked for is um asset management and data sharing. Um, at a level that like, you know, we can get on a dashboard and see and not something we'd have to request, so it's very transparent. Um, it doesn't speak to what kind of asset management they're doing now versus not, it's just what we have readily.
One thing other C managers and I have kind of talked about, and I've, you know, I've only seen this for a couple of years, the picture's getting clear. Is that they, they're not proactive and they are. Um, they don't consider individual communities differently. They view the whole district as one district and they're doing their operations, their. Their service and, you know, they, they haven't recognized and I think they're starting to do a little better. Um, here's what we're doing in Littleton, here's, you know, I'm sure here's what we're doing in, in, in uh. In Centennial, here's what Littleton wants, you know, we're having a conversation about park hours and there. They, there's a lot of, there's a lot of the first answer is, well, you know, that's a, a district-wide. Policy that we have, we have these, these hours, we, we don't close until eleven and I'm saying, well. If our whole community asks, you know, would you close earlier for, you know, Littleton Parks? And they're saying, well, maybe we could do that, you know, it's like, well. I'm surprised that they're, like you say, that they're not coming out to us about what's going to work for you. Let me tell you what we're doing. You know, they in, incorporated uh environmental stewardship into their, their last master plan. But they're not telling us that, they're not marketing their practices, their growth. It feels like some of their, of staffs, they have new staff come in, are professional and are driving more of their change. Um, at the operating level. So um, I'm not saying that, you know, I don't, I don't have, I don't have it figured out. At all, Scott, but I, I think, you know, change. Um, change is gonna happen through the persistent, what's the term you use, the uh. Persuasion campaign. I don't know how else to do it, except with the hardball political way that, that could be where we go. I mean, I think for Littleton, the operating agreement discussion is going to be more about, hey. Here's what Littleton wants, um, you know, can you do it? And, you know, and we'll go from there. So I, I'm, I.
How, how high are the stakes with the operation agreement? I'm terrified that it's going to be like the last one in place for.
Become a little more progressive than that, so. Are other cities' operations agreements with South Suburban similar? Like they're from two and a half pages from the seventies?
Updated.
I haven't looked at the others like you probably have.
Um, I believe Lone Trees was recently updated. I might have the wrong city, but I know one city did recently update theirs. I know that um some other cities were looking into updating theirs because they were that old. Um, it, it's a unique situation. I mean, I, I came from a city and county where the Parks Department was in that city and county and so. You develop those policies within, um, the city had its goals. If you have a district that is working with five different cities, not a lot, not all of our goals are going to be the same, like Jim was speaking to. Park hours, like we might have different priorities than Sheridan, than Lone Tree. Um, I mean, I know definitely like the landscape between Littleton and Lone Tree is very different. They're very new. Um, all their parks are brand new, um, ours are not. And so. How, how you start to. Encourage that breakdown from city to city and, you know, if they're used to operating district-wide. How, how do we get each city's priority to come into play? And I don't know exactly, I mean, I, you know. There's politics that go behind that, but I think there's also opportunity to um work with our neighboring cities and figure out what their goals are. And how ours relate to those. Um, if you have multiple agencies that are going into these operating agreements, like. Where do we align? Where do we differ? Um.
Is there ever a gathering of all of us representatives from all the communities served by South Suburban?
Make it your level, yes, but not at ours.
Well, all of.
We did, we did pull them all in for AP, yes.
Has the, has their own joint meeting with the uh South Suburban Board, so ours is coming up. Actually within days of when they'll be meeting. The city council and the, and the South Suburban Board, so it's the elected officials from both.
Just one community though.
Right, and then they have one in Centennial, they have that same meeting in Centennial and the same meeting in Lone Tree.
They were allowed to get someone from every community in a room, it feels like, then you might be able to identify those common goals. And at the same time say like, we want this and somebody else like, we want this, South Suburban, listen to us because basically all your stakeholders are here. And represented.
Folks at my level have some work to do too. We're, we've just started talking, we've just started setting some meetings for the. At least a few of us to kind of share the interests, concerns. Desires for, you know, surface levels among the communities, each, each of the C managers know kind of what the hotspots for their boards are. We're trying to um, you know, see where we can have some unified approach. I mean, there's been talk. We have a lot of issues, we've had concerns about maintenance. Well, I understand that in every community. Um, you know, another one, it's, it's not an issue at their council level. Um, another says, you know, oh, you know, kind of waves, goes, goes in and out and we're, we're saying, well. Let's all come together and at least look at the maintenance standards that South Suburban has, work with our staff. To come up with what we think a higher level could be. Um, and South Suburban will say, well, here's what it would take to fund that, because as we know, they have, you know, twenty-six staff for. Um, you know, major, major. Um, so I think that conversation could happen.
We did also, we, we chatted about, um, we met with Mike Gent last week to go through this and. One thing that Littleton does really well is we have a market pay model, which allows us to recruit and retain. Really high quality staff. Um, South Suburban does not operate on a market pay level. Um, you know, there have been similar positions where the difference is um. A hundred percent more pay for this, a similar role. Um, and so, you know, I think that's something that. They'll have to look at um in the long term as, you know, Colorado is getting more expensive and.
Um, is that something that's, could be in an operations agreement, any type of request for? I don't know, essentially resources for staffing, um, because it sounds like they're understaffed and that's existing staff is underpaid.
Hard to put that into an agreement because they'll, they'll need revenue, I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Revenue. Um, but, you know, that's the discussion that needs to happen.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but they're largely funded through a mill levy, correct?
Oh, entirely.
We do, we do pay a portion of the operating expenses for South Platte Park. Um, that's all for that park.
They also bond against it. Hence the new facility is bonded taxpayer.
Oh, they do, they do.
Yeah, yeah, South Suburban.
That proceeds and they have grants and things like, like that, but they don't have a sales tax for it, for instance. City is eighty percent funded by, by sales tax. They go a lot of taxes and a lot of special districts are entirely property tax.
Kelsey, when you're in those meetings with your sort of uh all these, your peers, it's South Suburban, the other sort of operations people. And you're saying, hey, let's talk about plants. Can you get the sense that they have administrative support coming back with or they're kind of like, hey, don't tell anyone? It's a secret.
I don't, I don't know if I want to respond to that. I don't, uh.
Hey, I mean, it's the reality.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I think that there's, it's worth taking with a grain of salt what, you know, someone in operations might vent to you in the field versus what might be an organizational issue, so.
They want to move forward. They want to, is that?
I have heard, especially when we talk about forestry, them expressing the need for additional resources, additional funding. Um, they do feel limited in their ability to um, really excel out of kind of their just core reactionary tasks right now. Um, and so, and, and granted, that's largely on the forestry side. You know, I think South Platte Park is, is a, just kind of a, its own weird little system. And I think they're operating great. Um, something that has always been odd to me is that that open space program isn't overlaid with the rest of open space management within the city. Uh, or the district, correct. Um, Scott Latona, the manager, is like the expert in all things open space and native plants. Um, and so, oh yeah. Loves that park. But he doesn't manage the open space management for anything outside of South Platte Park. And so, um, I, I believe that's, operation is really just folded under their general um, O and M model, which um, a lot of times you see this was similar at Denver when I worked there is um, you don't necessarily have a lot of expertise um, in those areas. You just have your general books employees that are probably better trained in turf and irrigation management and trying to manage open space as well. Um, just tend to fall to the back burner a little bit, but.
It is messy. Can you show us what's on your spreadsheet or whatever?
No, it's like a sticky note.
To do is ask Kelsey after this meeting to kind of put that
I am, they're drafting a formal memo to give to you and Mike for next week, which would, it
Committee and that's can, that hopefully can be some basis for your conversation.
Yeah, so I will detail our current operating agreement, um, what's laid out in that, all the amendments that have been done. What we'd like to see out of them, um, formally presented in those negotiations.
You can even attach the original agreement to that.
Oh, it's all going, yeah. It's all going, yeah. Um, but I'm sending that to them literally next week, so.
Um, we support whoever it is you all want supported, just in light of Rob Hannah coming here while this is, is, is uh, what is the timeline, Rob, with this operations negotiation?
Well, we, we need to get this process, you know, completed where we have kind of the statement of of practice, expectations. Uh, the root and, the root and renew process will finish up. I think this winter, there's one more round of public engagement happening around that. Um, so I, I think, you know, early to mid next year, um, we'll be trying to, you know, sit down and just work through that.
Um, so as far as us presenting something to council, would like end of this year be ideal?
Yes, I think, you know, I, the timeline that, that we've kind of thought through is we're having this meeting. Well, you'll, you'll have a conversation with, with Rob Hannah in August. Um, hope, you know, hopefully you can then take a couple of months, you know, a couple of meetings, uh, do some thinking, some talking, research, you know, this committee's show that you can bring your own ideas um, as, as well. And then I think if you can start to craft kind of work recommendations on these environmental practice standards, standards, expectations um, that can be recommended to council, then the council can say, yeah, this, this is what we're looking for. Um, and I think if that happens at the end of the year, the holidays get tougher, these things. So January, then, you know, then we'll, we'll have that and we can have that alongside the other visioning that we've been doing.
We're an advisory board to council. Is this the direction that they want, want us?
This is what, yeah, they, they, what they had said in the follow-up meeting after your plan. When we were kind of sharing with, with them how we thought we could roll out your uh, recommendations and move through those. The item about kind of engagement with South Suburban, this is the role.
I want to presume on your time, Jim, are you able to be a part of that meeting, Rob?
Yeah, I'm gonna be here next month.
Are you all gonna be here?
Yeah, I'm biased, right? But I think that the, the management plans that we've developed and the goals lined out in our strategic plans are forward-thinking and being an advocate for those and how those overlay with South Suburban, but really any of our partners.
I, I, I would ask some questions next. Ask, you know, he'll, he'll have his kind of key, key folks. And he, he, he wants to come and share with this committee, you know, what they are doing and what their you know, vision is, their initiatives are. Um, and I, I think, you know, some of that will line up with what you've heard tonight. But I think you can also ask questions about some of the issues that you'll see in the memo from Kelsey about where does this fit in your, your plan, your operations? Why, what's, what's challenging about this? You know, why, um, we see that your, your staffing is, is low on this, this issue on forestry. You know, how does that factor into what we see in the field? I think there are, you know, tactical ways that you can just have some conversation about what we don't see them doing.
Do you have any sense what they're gonna want from us?
I don't know. You know, I have asked them to come and, you know, share with us what, what South Suburban is doing. You know, they have this new um, thrust in their master plan about sustainability. What does that mean, Rob? You know, that, I, I, that's what I've said. Tell us, talk about what that means and what, what that means for your operations. Um, so that we have a better sense, because here, kind of, I've said, here's what we're asking this committee to do. Help us, you know, work with our staff to articulate Littleton's expectation for e- environmental practices and
Can you, uh, when you talk with Steve next, Steve Bard, uh, try to make sure that he's here as well as, as the liaison. It just feels like a relatively important fraction of South Suburban, bring as many resources to it as we can. Is that on, available in mine?
Yes.
I think we talked about the best management plan, maybe not.
I didn't send that out. Make sure we get it on our website. It could have been like when, well, fitting in a year or two, when the new website came out, there's, there are some things that didn't end up on the new website that were on the whole one.
You send that out. Do you mind including a link to the forestry master plan or just the website that we created? So it's all in one place, for sure.
I just have a thought on the political side. We know what the, who the board member is that represents Littleton. Or is there such a thing?
Who knows what his last name? Uh, I just met him about a month ago. He's new.
Okay.
Yeah, and just so you're, you're aware how the, how the relationship currently works, um, there's what we call a, a subcommittee um, that meets monthly, I think bi-monthly with, with them. So there's two, two city council members, two board members. Um, executive director, Rob Hannah, myself, and then public works director and their kind of operations, what either their park's planning manager or their operations. It can vary from meeting to meeting, but we, you know, sit down and um, go over kind of current projects. We can talk, we've, we've talked about these, not tonight's issues, but, you know, maintenance uh, issues that we, that we see, you know, for instance, we're talking about review park and the update, you know, the public meeting that's going to happen next month there. We've got the um, Jackass Hill Park, just status of that and what's happening. So um, those are, that's kind of the tenor and tone of those meetings. That's how the relationship currently works.
The Keith Gardner.
Yeah.
Um, I have worked closely with their planning manager this year, um, to develop both Littleton and South Suburban's five-year capital plans, um, so that we are in agreement on what to prioritize over these next couple of years. What's that been done in the past? I don't really know, but I know it's, it's been, it's been really a positive experience, I think, for both sides. Really sit down and hash out their priorities for the community. Um, they, they've been shifting over the last couple of years and so we put together those plans together.
I would say the staff, we actually have a pretty good relationship with South Suburban, even on the operations side. We have issues, they're usually very responsive, they call a lot, so.
I think, yeah, I have the big difficulty with that, you know, sometimes things that are a priority to us, they maybe just aren't able to get to just because of their back level, well, they're more grown and so, um, and we work with them. Help support when we can, because technically we do owe most of the land that they maintain. So, um, you know, we want to protect it and Any other questions? I'll have another chance to ask Kelsey questions for a while, so get them out.
Out of here. August twelfth, it's not sooner, so.
Timing is too. I'm hoping that the committee can kind of do its work, have some draft thoughts. And then when, when Kelsey's back, she can join the discussion and let's kind of tune it up.
You're coming in.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Uh, technically you're chairs.
Does the committee know your news?
Uh, tomorrow is my last day with the city. Um, I will be close. I will be in Eaglewood. Um, but, you know.
It's gonna be our new staff liaison in your
I mean Brent and Matt, Mike, really, you know, and then, you know, as when the coordinator is hired. Sure, sure. So, but you'll be supported, well-supported. Um, I've been training Mike, you know what I mean? Do your agendas, you're gonna be able to do the whole shebang. So you're in good hands. I gave him step-by-step instructions. Okay, you guys are gonna be just overcommitted. Didn't he just get hired to the bike program?
Yeah, he's gonna be busy, man.
He's one of the bike drivers for the
You're gonna be very well-supported.
Um, and also I told him that I will question.
Yeah, I heard that.
Uh, are you, I just want to make sure that we're going. Is we're not done on business?
No, we, so we just have a couple of quick additional agenda items, which are forests.
My report is that tomorrow's my last. Um, I'll be working at Eaglewood in procurement, so.
By the way.
Yeah, Eaglewood. Uh, I, uh, also Amy, uh, if you haven't heard, she resigned. Yeah, Amy, um, has resigned, so that position will get filled in April. So if you know, folks, let them know that the application will be open in December.
Oh, we can't fill it before April?
I checked with Colleen and I don't think there's a process for it, for, for the advisory boards.
Well, you know, I think in talking with Mayor Schlechter, we think, you know, in this case, um, it might be with timing and all the rest. Since we're gonna be filling and seating a new board in April, that's probably the plan there.
Yeah, we appreciate it. And, and by the way, Amy didn't resign out of any hard feelings.
No, Amy's, yeah, she, she was like sick of you guys. It's crazy. Uh, no, she's, she's doing a lot of really good things.
She's very involved in the Littleton Community Retreat and she's got a lot of family stuff.
He is, yeah, she will be your supporter forever and always. Um, and I'll make sure that, you know, when you all started, your, your firms were staggered so that you wouldn't all be done at the same time. So I'll make sure before tomorrow to reach out, uh, on whichever, if you have a term ending. Um, I can actually look right now. So you'll just have to think about, so that happened with Sidrum and Nick. Um, both for, for the reasons obviously decided not to apply, but two of you will need to reapply when that, if you're interested. Um, but I'll make sure that you know who you are, um, and how that process will go. So there will, in theory, unless Amy was one of them, we
And moving forward, how long are, are term?
Three, but when they started a new board to make sure that you're not all piecing out at the same time, uh, making sure that they were, that they were staggered. But three, three years.
The other reports, thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for everything. We'll miss you. Say hi to Eaglewood's mayor, he's my neighbor.
You know.
Friend of mine.